For all this meeting order, please all rise to salute the flag. I politely give this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner has been excused. Mr. Depot.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Monti.
Here.
Mr. McNally.
Here.
Mr. Skazavala.
Mr. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Pleady.
Here.
Mr. Moore has been excused. Mr. Marnell.
Here.
Mr. Whitson.
Here.
Mr. Jordano.
Here.
Mr. Tyler.
Here.
Mr. Golland.
Here.
And Mr. Preston.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple guests with us today, and I'll right up front say I'm probably gonna butcher not one but both your names. So, from the Clinton Essex Franklin Library System, we have Iwa Jankowska, Director, and Anja Bouchard, Librarian. Come on up, please. Right up here.
So, I would like to thank you so much for your support, and I don't know if you remember, but in the fall, I came to you, and I spoke about a grant that we were applying for, and my colleague Anya Bouchard got it from National Library of Medicine, and we would like to show you what we did with it. It has to do with routes to recovery for drug addictions, so we have a booklet that we will give to you, and also an app. So, here's Anya.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, as Eva stated, this grant allowed us to create these booklets, and the nice thing about this is it connects people in Clinton Essex and Franklin Counties with local as well as online resources related to substance abuse. The content is intended to not only help those who are fighting addiction, but also the professionals and the loved ones who are supporting them. And, you know, people, I think, have wondered that why did the library get involved in this project, but as information providers, this is really a perfect fit for us, and it really enables us to point people to trustworthy resources. So, as far as the content in the booklet is concerned, not only do we address substance abuse and mental health issues, but also some other supportive services as well. Includes information on housing, and food, and transportation, and those things are all very important, because if a person is trying to go through recovery, and they don't know where their next meal is coming from, or they don't know where they're staying tonight, you know, that's a big obstacle. Those are going to be the first and primary things that they're trying to address. As far as the transportation piece is concerned, the three counties that we serve, Clinton Essex and Franklin, some of it covers some very rural area, and so this is a real challenge for people sometimes to get to the treatment providers, and so we want to help them connect. If they finally have made that decision that they'd like to engage in treatment, they'd like to work on this, the last thing we want to do is to have transportation be an obstacle to that. So, we also have health and legal concerns covered in these booklets, and then I mentioned the online resources. Those are really important, because in this day and age, people, I think, in general, are very comfortable searching online for information, though as you probably are all aware, the quality of the information that you find can be really questionable. And so, we want to direct people to accurate information and trustworthy sources, so that was very important to us in this project. We also have a section on literacy and also libraries. We have thirty libraries and three reading centers across the three counties, and these booklets have been distributed to all of those locations, so people can pick up copies there. In addition to that, libraries are just a source of a great deal of information on mental health and substance abuse, and it's all free, so we really would like to see people reaching out and getting the benefit of that as well. Before I started working with the Clinton Essex Franklin Library System, I was a caseworker with the Clinton County Department of Social Services, and one of the things that we'd find is that people would forget about their appointments, or double book appointments, so we would give them little appointment calendars to help them organize that. So, one of the things that I've also built into these booklets is a little appointment calendar in the back, too, just to give them the extra tool that they can use to help keep everything on track. In the back of the booklets, we have a little book pocket, because you know libraries, we love our book pockets. This particular book pocket actually contains an evaluation card, so we're looking for feedback from people. If there are any resources that we've missed, we want to hear about it. We want this to be as useful as possible to people. If there are any changes or updates, we want that information as well. People can bring these to their nearest library, they can put a stamp on, mail it to us, there's also an online link that they can provide that feedback as well. The other thing in our book pocket is a bookmark with a live guide that we created. And a live guide is really just a resource guide that compiles information on a certain topic. So, that particular recovering from addiction live guide that we created has resources way beyond even what's in this booklet. There are videos people can watch, there are links to different articles, and then it does talk about what the library provides, and it's not only books in print, it's eBooks and videos, and just so much out there that they can access. So, the one problem with a hard copy guide is that the information does become outdated, and we recognize that. This has had several revisions since we first started printing. So, if they go to that online live guide that I just mentioned, there's actually the most recent PDF of this booklet, so that they can always have the most recent up-to-date information. But the most exciting part of the grant is the fact that all of this information is available in an app that we developed. It's available for iOS and Android devices, and it's free for any user. So, that is something that we were just thrilled to be able to offer, and one of the things that allows people to do, too, when they pull up these different treatment providers on their app, if anything that has a specific address location built into it, it'll tell you how far away you are from each of those providers, so you can try and pinpoint the one that's closest to you, and it also gives all their contact information, makes everything really handy, whether you have it or gathered in one location. It also allows us to use push notifications for all the users for our app, so if there's an event coming up that we want people to know about related to substance abuse, we can send out a push notification and let them know, and they'll just get a little notice come up. We did that recently with the Drug Take Back Day, so when that was going on, they received a notice saying that this was going on, and there was a link to all the different locations where they could return all of their medications. It also has a tell friend feature, so it's very easy to pass it on to someone who might be interested in the information. I also envision this to be very useful for a social worker or a counselor, if there's someone sitting in their office, they can send it right to them, make sure it gets on their phone, and they have access to it before they ever leave, because after they walk out that door, you know, life happens, and they may never make it onto their mobile device. So, the grant actually supports the app for two years, and at that point, we will look at it and see how the use is, and if we can justify continued support. Eva has agreed to support it beyond that two-year mark through our budget. And that's basically the summary of everything that I have as far as the grant and what we were able to do with it. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Apparently not. Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you both. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. We will now move to resolutions.
Resolution number 132, authorizing the Department of Social Services to apply for and accept a governor's traffic safety grant in the amount of $22,000 for the local grant, and $6,120 for police traffic services, and $5,400 for child passenger safety, and authorizing execution of the contract with the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
Moved by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 133, of congratulations and appreciation to Susan Hathaway upon her retirement from service with the Essex County Department of Social Services.
Moved by Mr. Monti, unanimous second, please. Thank you.
Resolution number 134, of congratulations and appreciation to Linda Decker upon her retirement from service with the Essex County Department of Social Services.
Moved by Mr. Depot, unanimous second. Thank you.
Resolution number 135, appointments to boards, committees, and/or councils.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by Mr. Giadon. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So carried.
Resolution number 136, of congratulations to Catherine Mae Giacola upon celebrating her 100th birthday.
Moved by Mr. Golland, unanimous second. Thank you.
Resolution number 137, accepting, adopting, and placing in file policies, plans, procedures, and annual reports.
Moved by Mr. Miga, seconded by Mr. Golland. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? So carried.
Resolution number 138, authorizing the hiring of a temporary, part-time summer employment in the Sheriff's Department.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Any discussion? All, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 140, recognizing May 15, 2017, as National Police Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week.
Moved by Mr. Golland, unanimous second. Thank you.
Resolution number 141, authorizing budget amendments for various departments.
Moved by Mr. Skazavala, seconded by Mr. Merrihill. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 142, changing the date of the June 2017 regular board meeting from June 5 to June 6.
Moved by Mr. Golland, seconded by Mr. McNally. Any discussion? I'm not sure what happens if we don't approve this. We all leave. It doesn't have to be board, it's chairman. We're already there. All in favor? All opposed? So carried.
Resolution number 143, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract with Donald Hoffman SRA for an appraisal of property located at 8487 US Route 9 in the Towne Lewis, bearing Towne Lewis Tax Map Number 47.13-1-28.100, in the amount of $1,750.
Moved by Mr. Monti, seconded by Mr. Pleady. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 144, authorizing the county purchasing agent to go out to RFP or bid for surveying services for the Department of Public Works.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Whitson. Discussion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? So carried.
Resolution number 145, authorizing a contract with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for reimbursement of solid waste transportation of disposal costs outside of Essex County for the years 2017 and 2018.
Moved by Mr. McNally, seconded by Mr. Pleady. Discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 146, authorizing the settlement of an action entitled Fidelity and Deposit Company of Maryland versus Essex County, renewed in the Supreme Court, County of Essex, bearing Index Number 06592010, in the amount of $179,192, and authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute any and all releases, stipulations, or discontinuance, or other documentation incident to settle the litigation, and further authorizing the delivery of a check from the County of Essex in the amount of $179,192 to Fidelity and Deposit Company of Maryland after receipt of a fully executed settlement agreement.
Moved by Mr. Merrihill, seconded by Mr. Skazavala. Discussion?
I'd just like to comment and congratulate our county attorney. It's amazing how far back this settlement really goes. We've been well-served by that settlement. You did a great job. Thank you.
Next one. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 149, accepting the mortgage tax report.
Moved by Mr. Pleady, seconded by Mr. Skazavala. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution 150, authorizing changes to the Essex County Agricultural District.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Discussion? No discussion? It seemed like there was a lot of discussion. I stopped talking about this anyways, then roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 151, authorizing the payment of $7,000 of appropriated public health funds together with an additional $7,000 of grant money in payment of the accreditation application fee to the Public Health Accreditation Board, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract with respect to the same.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Miga. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 152, authorizing and permitting office for the aging to apply and accept funding from the Adirondack Health Institute for the Coaching for Activation Grant opportunity through Delivery System Reform Incentive Program for the grant period July 1, 2017 through March 31, 2018, in the amount of $27,590, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Miga. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pleady.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Golland.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution number 139, of appreciation and recognition to the Essex County Sheriff's Department, Correction Staff, in honor of National Correctional Officers Week, May 7 through the 13th, 2017.
Moved by Mr. Monti, unanimous second. Thank you.
Resolution 140, recognizing May 15, 2017, as National Police Officers Memorial Day
in the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week. Mr. Monte?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 154, authorizing Essex County to sell a piece of property in the Town of Jay bearing tax map number 27.10-4-11.000 to FNT Wells Fargo Bank in an amount not less than $6,091, further authorizing the county attorney and county treasurer to negotiate a higher price in their discretion and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute any and all documents necessary to convey this property.
Moved by Mr. Gillett, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Discussion? If not, roll call vote, please. Vote, sorry, Mr. McNally.
That's $6,091 instead of the tax.
Actually, I received from Mike Diskin updated figure of $10,000 something, so we probably should amend this resolution to change that figure to no less than, I'd say $11,000. That's the tax due now.
No, it's, I don't think we should. If they owe $10,000 in taxes, it shouldn't be sold for less than that.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. It won't be sold less than that.
We're going to amend it to...
Well, yeah, well, give us a discretion. We would have, I was just going to let it go this way and definitely get to 10, but if you want to, we can change the $6,000 to $11,000. Or $10,000.
It's already in the $11,000. To negotiate a higher price?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you make sure to have a minimum though, I would take credit.
The $11,000 minimum. Put $10,000. It's $10,000 something. I'm going to get the tax amount, but I don't have the documentation with me. Mike just brought it up before I came to the meeting.
So, Mr. McNally, I would guess your motion for an amendment is $11,000?
Make it 10, make it 10.
10, put 10.
Sure. Yep, it's got to be.
Because it might be a little bit.
Seconded by Mr. Pleady.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to. What I'm saying...
Or do you have a question?
I want to ask Arch. What's, how's the Town of Jay on this? You will. I just, seconded Town of Jay, roll call.
Okay, so there's been an amendment?
No.
No.
Okay, we got a mover and a second, and then I guess we don't need to do a roll call.
No, just a voice vote.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
opposed?
Now the resolution has amended.
Okay, now the resolution has amended. Moved by, do we need a mover and a second again?
No.
We're good?
We're good.
All right, roll call.
So, who was the mover and second?
Gillett moved it and Marnell seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, I got the amendment. Resolution has amended. Okay, this is a, resolution has
amended. Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monte?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 147, of recognition and congratulations to Richard Graver as a recipient of the New York State Office for the Aging Volunteer of the Year.
Moved by Mr. Monte.
Second.
Thank you. Unanimous second.
Resolution number 148, of appreciation to Robert R. Swat for his many years of service to the Town of Lewis.
Moved by Mr. Monte.
Second.
Thank you.
Resolution number 149, accepting the mortgage tax report.
Moved by Mr. Pleady, seconded by Mr. Skazavala. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monte?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 151, authorizing the Purchasing Agent to award bids and issue contracts or purchase orders in the Department of Public Works and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Merrihue.
Twelve.
Discussion?
Twelve.
Vote, sorry, twelve.
Yes, you do.
Now any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monte?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
I'm going to abstain because Heinz Electric is a personal vendor for my business.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 148, authorizing the Purchasing Agent to award bids and issue contracts or purchase orders in the Department of Public Works and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Merrihue.
Twelve.
Discussion?